Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Patterson, council members. Let's come back. So we're back to our special meeting on Tuesday, March 5th. So we have a few items that we have to take formal action. Madam Clerk, let's start with item number one on this special meeting.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the award of contract to Premier Compaction Systems LLC for the purchase, delivery, and installation of solar power trash compactors throughout the urban enterprise zone areas. It's bid number 23.16 for the Department of Economic Development, Economic Development Resolution 24:123.
Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Kalik. Roll call. Madam Clerk, on item number one?
Roll call and item number one for approval, Councilwoman Abdulaziz.
Pass.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to say with this item here, I visit two cities. And then I noticed the other night when I went to the county, I saw that they had called Bigelow or something, Biggie something, trash compressor. So I like the, oh, Biggie. No, Councilman, please. Anyhow, I looked at it. I didn't like it with the handle, but with the ones that we're getting, it has the foot pedal, which I like the foot pedal. Nobody do not want to touch things, you know? People are not touching doors, they're not touching knobs. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila.
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson? We are voting on resolution. Yes, thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Councilman Vilas?
I just want to say thank you first to the Governor's Office to allow us to bring back the UEZ zone in our city. Gave us $10 million and it's well spent in our city with the leadership of Economic Development Department. You know, when you go around small cities in the state of New Jersey and you see these cans, and the first thing you say, when are we going to have them in Patterson? So this is the time to see it in Patterson. Hope the community get orientated and making sure that the garbage goes inside the can. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vilas. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we definitely need these. I have two UEZ zones are very vibrant, probably the most vibrant, busiest business districts in the city of Patterson, in South Patterson, and 21st staff. We are purchasing 90, and I'm glad to announce that about 30% of those are about, I think 30%, that is in the sixth ward, which is a big one to help us keep our clean, our streets clean. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz. Mr. President?
Thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. This is definitely a great decision in the right direction with funding from the UEZ zone. Those are solar power trash compactor. They're very needed in our community, and I'm looking forward to see those in my third ward, Park Avenue, East 33rd, and also Breland Avenue is a UEZ zone. So let's continue moving the city forward. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are eight yeses, one absence. Item number one is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number two?
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the award of contract to Talarico Building Services Incorporated doing business as Service Master, TBS Division, for the clean car, commercial corridors throughout the urban enterprise zone areas. Rebid number 23.14 for the Department of Economic Development, Resolution 24:123.
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Vilas, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call. Madam Clerk, on item number two?
Roll call and item number two for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have read through this over and over and over. I read it over and over, and I cannot support this item. My vote is no.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson?
No.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims?
Before I vote on this item, I just want to say to our community, I know that this was a sealed bid process, but I just think that sometimes we have to look into the way that we do things when it comes to us disregarding Patterson residents for opportunities, or not even an opportunity to extend additional opportunities to individuals that are already doing the work. I think it's a sad day in Patterson that we will stand to support someone from the outside being able to receive this benefit, and we've had a Patterson resident do this work for years. Madam Clerk, I cannot support this item. I have to stand in full support of Patterson first. My vote is no.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Vilas?
So before I forget, I forgot to mention the previous item that also I get in the UEZ trash can or Park Avenue Market Street, all the UEZ zones, so get ready for that. But in this item, in this item,
both are parked.
You know, we cannot put a gray cloud over a clear process. Gray cloud over a clear process. Those that have been in this seat can understand the procurement and the process that was done with a professional conduct. Everybody was participated at a nine vendors that requested the package. Only six vendors returned it back and came back with a low bidder on it. It's the process. We know that whoever don't comply with a contract that was honored, then the, any legal department in the city could look into it and then take the proper action. We are here, in front of us, in front of us is this honoring the requests of what they requested for, and then there's nothing else that we could do only to vote in affirmative, knowing that our street needs to get clean. It will help our DPW to maintain it clean and make sure the residents of Patterson understand that we need to keep our street clean. So that's my opinion, based on all the documents that I have in my hands, that I analyze it, and analyzing the process, I think it's a fair one. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vilas. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On this item, I pulled this item out of the agenda to do my homework and to just double check and verify that the process was correct. And yes, there was a bidding process, multiple company participated. The lowest bidding, the lowest of responsibility bidding, it was equally packaged for everybody. There was no differences. We have an expert on our purchasing department, which is Mr. Harris Abaya, who, a professional person that has been here for many, many years. So, and something that we need to know is that this clean commercial corridor grant, if we refuse to use it now, we're going to lose it. We're going to have to send the money back to the state. We're not going to be able to use it again, ever again. And that's, and that's something that needs to be done. I'm looking forward to see this company doing the work. If they don't do the work, then we will go to the next person, and the next person for Patterson is filthy, and we have to work hard to clean our streets. That's, that's what, that's the problem that we have ahead. But I've been saying, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the votes are five yeses, three no's, one absence. Item number two is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three?
Item number three, item number three is a resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss the pending workers' compensation and the matter of Gregory Gurley versus the City of Patterson. Resolution 24:124.
No, before we, Council President, we should be doing item 11. Because we're not doing executive session.
Yeah, we have to approve these resolutions.
The approvals are starting on item number 11.
Oh, number 11.
All right, Madam Clerk, so. Item number, yeah. Yeah, let's start by item 11, Madam Clerk.
We did not do four and five.
Oh, you didn't close and open?
We did not.
Oh, Council President, point order.
We did not do, we did not.
We need to open and close and then open again.
So we have to approve the items to go in, and then we'll start from 11.
Okay.
So I'll just read them together just for essence of time.
Okay.
So the first one is a resolution, it's item number four, resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of One Sierra versus City of Patterson. Item number five is a resolu, I'll take the votes and everything. Resolution.
Council President.
Madam Clerk, in the beginning of the meeting, we did that.
We did, but we did not vote.
Okay.
So let's start at 11.
So this just council, and I just want to make sure they're right. You guys opened up the special meeting. Didn't you vote to go to executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
So we were in executive session, correct, Corporation Council? Now we are back out of executive session, so we could take formal action now on number 11, correct?
Formal action will be taken.
On number 11. So we're, so we need to read number 11 now. Yeah, number, but that's number 11 on the agenda.
Correct. And that's the next step right now?
Hold on.
Corporation councils? Okay.
So let's go into item number three. It's a resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining the city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Gregory Gurley versus the City of Patterson. It's a law resolution 24124.
Move by Councilwoman Vilas? Second by Councilwoman Jackson? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, roll call and item number three for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz? Councilwoman Cotton? Council, Councilman Jackson? Councilwoman Mims?
I know we're in the middle of roll call, and you're not supposed to do that, do this. However, I just need a point of clarification as to what's happening, because the voting resolution item started at 11. So I'm just trying to understand why we're on these items. So could you provide some clarity for personnel? I'm a little confused.
So I'm just reading this, and then I'll go on to the one that we're reading, we've voted into the record.
So we, so we should not be voting on this number? No, 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 no.
So the Councilwoman is correct. Right now, what we're voting on is actually to go back into executive session. Read the resolution that I just voted yes on, saying resolution authorizing municipal council to go into executive session.
So right now, we are to go on to item 11.
And right, right after we read it, Councilmember, then we start on item 11, taking formal action.
So all, all moves and seconds should be removed, and any vote should be removed, and we go to item 11? Because someone moved and seconded that item, so we have to remove all of that? No, we're, the vote, Council President, the vote. We're not voting on three. That was just presented. Whoever moved three and seconded three has to remove, and if anyone voted, we should be voting on item number 11.
Council, Council President?
Give me a second. Madam Clerk?
I'm not.
So, no, she said yes.
I'm not, I'm not sure. Did we come, did we say, did we vote to come out of the executive section and go back?
We did.
Okay.
We already did that. We passed that. We are on, on, on the regular meeting, on the special meeting, taking formal action. So what Madam Clerk is doing, she's reading into the record.
We're reading for the record, and then we'll vote on item number 11, because they were not voted on.
Correct.
So item number four.
Oh, you're just reading on the record, and then we go back.
And then we vote on it.
11 all the way through 18.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing municipal council executive session in or adjoining the city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of One Sierra versus City of Patterson. It's a law resolution 24125. Item number five is a resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Kevin Collins versus the City of Patterson. Item number six is a resolution authorizing municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending workers' compensation in the matter of Ishmael Kivank versus City of Patterson, resolution 24127. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing municipal council or executive session, executive closed session in or adjoining city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Mohammed Khalil versus City of Patterson. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing a municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Humberto Guzman, Elba Gonzalez, and Alberta Guzman versus City of Patterson. Item number nine is resolution authorizing municipal council or executive closed session in or adjoining city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Gina Zavala versus the City of Patterson. And item number 10 is a resolution authorizing municipal council executive or closed session in or adjoining city council chambers, 155 Market Street, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Justin Montgomery versus the City of Patterson.
Move by Councilwoman Vilas?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Davila and Councilwoman Abdulaziz. Roll call. And Udine as well. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Roll call and items one through 10, Councilman Abdulaziz? Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vilas?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
So the votes are eight yeses, one absence. We will now enter into, we'll now vote on these items.
So now we'll start with item number 11?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Gregory Gurley versus City of Patterson. It's a law resolution 24132.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Vilas, a second by Councilwoman Udine. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item 11?
I seconded too, but it's okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Abdulaziz?
After a lengthy discussion, executive, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Cotton? Item number 11.
The one that you want to start for, 11.
The formal action will be taken.
Working's come.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vilas?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk?
The votes are eight yeses, one absence. Item number 11 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We still have one of, one of the lawyer that came for item number 18. Let's take item 18. Madam Clerk, right now?
Number 18?
Yes, number 18.
Yes. Okay, item number 18 is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Justin Montgomery versus the City of Patterson. It's a law resolution 24:139.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Vilas, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 18?
Roll call and item number 18 for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Just trying to be clear. This is the, the one that's, okay, so let me tell you something. And let me be clear. These are the reasons why a person like myself would seek out a seat like this. There is absolutely no way I can be, I can vote in approval of this. This is a young man that had his teeth knocked out, that got his face beat in, falsely accused, falsely charged. The judge acknowledges that he was wrongfully treated. He was coerced, however, we know how the system is working when it comes to black people. He was coerced into, into taking a PTI for a crime he never committed. And then you have people who have had far less happen to them take much bigger settlements. Now, I get it, which, we're here to protect the public's best interest when it comes to protecting the taxpayers' dollars. But we also have a certain interest that we have to protect where young people getting, being mistreated. This right here is just an irresponsible gesture across the board. It's, it shows how the system is flawed when it comes to the treatment or the, the, the respect that's given to, to young black people. This person did not commit a crime. Now he has a record of PTI. Now he has, and, and, and some people want to say, well, he has a lawyer, he had a representation. We have black people that has been falsely represented by, by the system all the time. We understand that these people go in the back room and make these deals and give up something on this end for something on that end. This is an embarrassment. And the fact that, that we're not standing, that even, even, even the administration should be standing firm or with the, with the, with the outcome of this. This is, this is unacceptable. Somebody to have, have taken on so much abuse, and then to potentially leave a situation where his attorney's going to reap more than he's going to, than he will in this situation is, is typical. It's, it's expected. But I refuse to stand still on items like this. I would never be in support of things like this. This is part of the reason why I'm here, and I'm going to stand firm on it each and every time. Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Councilman Jackson? Councilwoman Mims?
So based on the case in and of itself, in our session, I wanted to see, this case has been closed. The judge has rendered a decision, and the plaintiff agreed to the settlement amount. We have an in righty, there's a case number. With that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udine?
My vote is yes, Madam.
Thank you. Councilman Vilas?
The facts of the facts is that this gentleman was not tried in a federal court for a criminal charge. He went there to claim his civil rights. Nothing to do with a criminal part. He settled with a PTI. That's why he wants it. He settled. If he was not settling for PTI, he would get a different trial. But we're not here for that. We're here based on the claims that he's making. He has a good lawyer. The lawyer spoke to the, not the judge, to his client, the client with the family, the family with the other family, and all they agreed that that's the settlement that he wants. We are here blessing his wishes. We are here blessing his wishes. As I stated, other councilmen here have challenged. When we say no, and they call us to federal court, we'll be kind, myself, even Council McCoy wasn't one of those audience out there. And when they say settle is beneficial for the city or not, we're going to pay more money. I'm not here to be the doctor of the law. I'm here to make sure that things are doing right. And I commend the attorney to understand that we are a distressed city and that we are here to support the settlement that the gentleman asked for. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vilas. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You heard this before. This is a $500,000 settlement. Both body agree to settle into this deal. The lawyer, so we have a very sensitive discussion last week at the finance committee, today on the executive section. Very sad, because for a bad police officer, we are in this situation. I feel very sorry for the victim, because I saw the picture. So we have to prevent this from happening. And internal affairs there, if you know that a officer was, didn't treat you correctly, you have a department that you could go and talk to a person there, make a report. We have to bring transparency at all the level in government. With that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, one no, one absent. Item number 18 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 12, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of One Sierra versus City of Patterson. It's a law resolution 24:133.
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Vilas, a second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Roll call and item number 12 for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Council, Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vilas?
And this is a working company? Oh, yes. Yes, works in a company, oh, yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, one no, one absent. Item number 12 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 13?
Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Kevin Collins versus City of Patterson, law resolution 24:134.
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Vilas. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 13?
Roll call and item number 13 for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vilas?
This is an employee that got hurt on the job, so my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vilas. Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, one no, one absent. Item number 13 is hereby adopted.
Item number 14?
Item number 14 is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending workers' compensation claim in the matter of Ishmael Kivank versus City of Patterson. It's law resolution 24:135.
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Vilas and Udine. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 14?
Roll call and item number 14 for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just for a point of clarity, because I'm getting a couple of text messages from some people. Uh, it's not uncommon, in fact, it's probably more common than ever, that I'm eight in favor, one against. And my eight in favor, one against at this point is, is in protest because, you know, for us to sit here and callously not acknowledge the fact that for... Yeah, I appreciate that. So for us to so callously not acknowledge the fact that black people have been hung on trees, have been sprayed with hoses, have been attacked by dogs. And when people are mistreated, we are here, as I'm here, I stand with every single community as I was called out recently for not supporting the ceasefire, which is totally incorrect. I support it every single time, whenever there's any community that's been disenfranchised. And for a young man to be so brutally beaten and then, and then those who are elected not to stand against the, uh, the mistreatment, I, I'm just, it just doesn't sit well with me. So although these items may justifiably be, uh, needed to be paid out, I can't sit here with a clear conscience and understanding that this young man was brutally beaten, teeth knocked out of his face, falsely arrested, then within a court of law, forced or coerced, however it was, I wasn't there to take a plea agreement to force to be taken a P T I, which he's never entitled to again, who's never had a history of criminal activity, but was in a certain segment of our community. The police were called, and we know oftentimes you could call police and it's hours before they respond, but seven units respond. And out of seven units, not one of them stopped this officer from beating the crap out of him. And we're gonna sit here and just vote on him, uh, in approval of, of a, of a settlement that's half of the amount of, of an employee that was wrongfully terminated, that the judge, uh, suggested a million dollars for. And this one, as he got in his face beaten, is being suggested for five hundred thousand. So again, that's just a point of clarity for the public. You know, no one is entitled, that could have been my son who was accused of stealing an ice cream bar and then leaves out with, with, with his teeth knocked out his face, taking a plea arrangement for P T I. Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims?
So, we're voting on this item, which is a workman's comp. They're very clear-cut concerns, right? When you do a work, workman's comp, that mean that an employee that works here, he got hurt during, on, during his work duty, based on whatever that concern is. Our lawyers worked diligently to try to come to a place of settlement, which sometimes parties have to agree to or not, and then they choose to go to jury. On a previous item, for what we previously voted on, and I didn't get to go into a full conversation. With the situation with the young man, there are some serious concerns because the officer involved has had some previous, um, issues. However, the case is closed. They went before the judge and the individual that was involved agreed to the settlement. So we, if he agreed to it with his lawyer present, we're just here to approve what was agreed upon. For me, I just wanted it in writing to see that that was done. We received that information. I have it here. We have a case number. And it shows that the plaintiff, uh, he agreed to the settlement and we supported his agreement. Well, I'm not saying that this shouldn't have taken place because it's, we know it should not have. But if you go to court with your lawyer and you say, "I agreed to five hundred thousand," who am I to say, because I'm not your lawyer? You said you want it. I'm here to vote to give it to you. That's what we did. That's why we voted yes. Because you wanted it and we agreed to that. Now, if you don't want it, then that, you go through the legal process with your lawyer to come back and do whatever, if it's possible to do that. But as a council body, it is our responsibility, when this comes before us, an executive session, to review the case and to listen to the information. I, I have to commend our legal department because every one of these cases, even though there are dollar amounts and some may seem higher than others, every one of these were, were requested at a higher amount. They were brought down, even the five hundred thousand dollars. The initial, it was one point five million. So we voted on five hundred thousand. So Patterson, I'm sure it'll be in the newspaper, but I want you to hear it first. They agreed to it. It is our responsibility within sixty days to vote to approve it, so people are not waiting on their money. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udine?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman Velez?
Once again, I don't know why we are repeating things like, if the public will not understand, what is a P T I? This gentleman accepted a P T I because he believed that he wanted it, a P T I. I mean, he didn't want it, he got a good lawyer. The lawyer would say, "Let's fight the case" and probably you get more charges. You never know. I, I'm not discussing the criminal case. Things was done properly. They was requesting a big amount of money, but back and forth, they agreed to get that type of money. So I don't know why we have to go back and forth. We are here for workers' comp. All those individuals that got hurt in the job, that had entitled to put a claim and workers' comp insurance will pay for it. And that also is agreed by a mediator in the workers' comp cases like that. So saying that, I'm voting for the health of this individual that get compensated. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Councilwoman Mims, for, for that explanation on item eighteen that we already voted on. On item number fourteen, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are seven yeses, one no, one absent. Item number fourteen is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number fifteen?
Item number fifteen is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Mohammed Khalil versus City of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-four colon one three-six.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Udine. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item fifteen?
Roll call and item number fifteen for approval. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, the items that we had to discuss in this executive session, some of them was workman comp, some of them was litigation. Now, the law allows the workman comp. If they work for the city and they get hurt, they get paid or they get, they can settle. It depends on what, what type of injuries they have, uh, if they cannot work no more, if they can work some more. So these items are items that is workman comp and litigation items. So we have to decide, um, to, the judges, the lawyers that we have working for us, um, and sometimes they start out like way, way out the window. And their job is to try to bring it down, especially too for the workman comp. If they get injured or hurt, I mean, we had some bad cases and I can tell you, um, we had, we had a few cases here where we had to borrow money to pay medical bills for about eight employees that they were that sickly. So sometimes you may not, they're there, the laws allow you to have the workman comp stuff. So, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Council, Councilwoman Davila? Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, Mims?
So in this particular case, this is not a workman's, uh, compensation case, it's a litigation. But even in litigation cases, it's still, um, when you come to these particular cases, there are different, um, extenuating circumstances. But I will say it again, I think our legal team did a great job in allowing, uh, the amount, dollar amount to be reduced. Um, and these are settlement amounts. So with that being stated, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udine?
So again, yeah, so this is not a working compensation. He was mistreated by one of the officer and was imprisoned. And this is the case he's, he's here for. So again, um, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Udine. Councilman Velez?
I just want to say that this litigation cases that involve police is from period, uh, previous situation that happened before the state taking over the police department. And a lot of these cases probably was the one that motivated the state to come in. So all these cases are from nineteen seventeen sixteen, and they are in front of us now. And, um, you know, and we need to do the right thing when it comes up to us. So still the taxpayer paying the errors of others in the past. Hopefully, under this two-year contract that this, uh, officer and charge have, we don't have to come back and keep on paying for wrongdoings in the police department. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did not...
Council, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry.
Madam, Madam Clerk, I passed, so...
Yes, I have to come back to you. I'm sorry.
No, no problem, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Davila?
So I'm, I'm very, um, feeling certain, I'm gonna abstain from this, um, vote.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. So I'll announce the votes now. Uh, the votes are six...
Council members, please, please?
I'll announce the votes now. Six yeses, one no, one abstention, one absent. Item number fifteen is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number seventeen?
About sixteen. You want sixteen?
Sixteen.
I'm, I'm sorry, sixteen, Madam Clerk.
So item number sixteen is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Humberta Guzman, Elba Gonzalez and Alberta Guzman versus City of Patterson. Law resolution twenty-four colon one three-seven.
Move by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item sixteen?
Roll call and item number sixteen. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
When this case happened, we didn't have cameras. Thanks God, now we got cameras that could work both sides now. So, um, my vote is yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. The votes are eight yeses, one absent. Item number sixteen is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number seventeen?
Item number seventeen is a resolution authorizing settlement of pending litigation claim in the matter of Gina Zavala Yopanque versus City of Patterson. Resolution twenty-four colon one three-eight.
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item seventeen?
Roll call and item number seventeen for approval. Councilman Abdulaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman, Councilwoman Mims?
Before I vote, just a point of observation. I'm not sure what's going on with the clock. And I'm receiving messages that the clock has, uh, it's not, it's not, I don't know if it's not working or there's a glitch. So we can take a look at that because everyone can see that on the camera. The clock that's, it's supposed to have a timer on it, but it looks like there's a glitch. Madam Clerk, with that being stated, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Udine?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez?
I have to fix in the clock. Yes.
Mr. President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. The votes are seven yeses, one no, one absent. Item number seventeen is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember, this, um, last item, with this like, last item, we conclude our special meeting that we have March fifth at eight P M. So let's do public portion now. Members of the public, um, you have three minutes to address this council respectfully. Right after the three minute, I'm gonna ask you to let, allow the fat, the next speaker to use this three minute. Let's be respectful to this chamber and to the City of Patterson. Madam Clerk, how many speaker do we have? Let's call the first...
Six speakers.
Let's call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Kim Freeman or Kit Freeman?
Mr. Green Freeman from the third ward. Three. Uh, man, man, man. And this is gonna contain some information. I really got stuck, huh? It's two fifty-nine. Pass out these pictures too. I need the pictures back.
Let's wait on the clock, Madam Clerk, until we get the information.
Wait a second, man. Here you go now. Okay? I'll give you three minutes, man.
Mr. Freeman, I'm just told the clerk to wait on the clock until we receive the information.
When you guys get your packets, we can go to the start. I don't like people staring at me with evil intent. I really don't. You can laugh what you want. You threaten me again, I'm gonna press charges on you. You can't threaten somebody and say you're gonna punch them in the face because you feel that they're rude. Who are you? I don't let nobody within six feet of me. I don't care who you are. You crazy or not, you're the one crazy. Okay? You can laugh what you want. That's why Alex hired you. I don't know how you can work for a guy with all these indictments. Okay? This is ridiculous. You can say whatever you want about me. I've never been indicted and I've never been to prison.
Okay, three.
But he's going to prison.
The three minutes, the three minutes, Madam Clerk, start, start the clock, Madam Clerk.
Next time you threaten me, say you're gonna punch me in the face, you're going to prison. Now, you can laugh what you laugh about that. Old gripey woman. All right, you ready? Yeah, whatever. You can say whatever you want in breath. I'll say more. You can't out-talk. You can't out-argue. Uh, you know what? No, you're the one crazy. Like most black women I know. You don't jump on a man's face. One thing I'll tell you, Teddy Martinez came to me like a man. All the other women came at me ready to fight and you know you can't win. I don't understand. Anyway, that six hundred twenty-five dollar ticket for the commercial thing, I'm glad you said follow the law, okay? But when the law kicks you in your ass, I'm gonna wreck it and be happy about it. Now, I'm here because of the package that you have. We have some constituents in the sixth ward. And I tried to talk to Al, and I like Al. I got nothing against Al. But obviously, there's a person on Nick about the eye, two sixty-seven. I don't know if you know these guys or not, Palestinians, whoever. I don't care. All I know is when I went out with Brother Udin, who I admire, he gets your A because he's accessible. He's out in the public. He's out there doing what we should have been doing, with the, with the, uh, clergy and community patrol that they have in Newark. I've been talking about this for three years. Udin did it without even doing all that. And you got clergy and community, bro. Third ward is not safe anymore. And that's a shame. Another thing, parking. We need designated parking. I lived at my address for thirty-two years. We never had a parking problem. We have now, out of the available twelve parking spots that's around my house, whatever like that, we have nineteen cars now. I told you next door, they have five cars. Now, there's four units over here. I don't know if Alex and his people bought it, but they're his people. Because I complained, he went over there. Now they all nicey-nicey to me. I've been there thirty-two years. These people been here six months. And now, the lady next door, Jamaican, she don't like me. All right? The gardeners next door, next door to me, they don't like me. The L E P, uh, what's my man? Uh, uh, from east side, Mr. Nelson, in LA. And we have another Jamaican family that's right across the street from me. All I need is two parking spots. Just two. There's six of them around my house. I have three in front, three on the side. Across the street, they got four. Across the street, three, four, four. Why can't... Why can't I come home?
Next speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Corey Teague.
Mr. Corey Teague. Mr. Corey Teague left, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Tashawn Wells.
Tashawn left, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Camisha Rogers Jones.
Camisha left too, next speaker.
Former Councilman Billy, William Bill McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Part of, part of good government is transparency and...
Madam Clerk, the clock, the three-minute clock, please.
He was dead, he hurt it, and my boy. I'm being rude, I'm gonna be cheap being rude. I'm coming to the east side and then maybe run the social media, guess what? Ms. Francis, who works for Alex, that a friend of mine.
Officer, officer, he gonna have to leave the chamber because we need to continue the public portion, he have to leave the chamber now. So, you, you have your name on the public speak and, and, alright, so, so you will have a mi- Alright, the three minutes on, good evening, three minutes on.
I'll allow, I'll allow her to speak ahead of me if you want.
Come to the mic, what, so you have your name on the public portion?
No.
Okay. Next speaker.
Why, Council President?
We are being televised.
Ma'am.
We're, it's, yes.
Council President, why don't you let her speak to the B. A. right on the side?
Miss, can you come and talk to the B. A. and Corporation Council, um, they will do a sidebar with you. Excuse me, uh, you, you, listen, you're in TV, if you could go outside, do a sidebar, I know you don't wanna be on TV, so, I mean, I, I could see your front of the mic, so you could, if you could do a sidebar with Councilman Jackson, but also Corporation Council as well, uh, or whoever, any council member that will definitely, that will address you, alright? Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Cons, Councilman William Bill McCoy.
Bill McCoy, um, candidate for the third ward, May fourteenth election. Let me just say, five twenty at fifteenth Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey. Let me just say real quickly that effective government requires that we be transparent and that we be accountable to the, to the public. You know, I hear folks talk about process, I've been a five-time council member and the council president is not invested with any greater power than any other councilperson. His job is to maintain the cor, decorum and to run the meeting. The only time that the council president have a, have a right to say what goes on the agenda or not is after the regular meeting. But the items going to workshop should really be done through consensus and moved to the, to the regular meeting. I wanna talk about this contract that you guys, um, voted on with regards to the closed bid. The council president last couple of weeks was saying how bad it was, the difference between the two, and you come back tonight and Councilman Velez and you say, oh, they follow the process, but the public doesn't know the process, they don't understand. It's quite apparent that one fifty-nine to three eighty, there's an issue and I think we owed an ob, we had an obligation to explain that vote to the council, to the, to the public. I do believe there's provision, clo, open bid or not, to declare something that is not a responsible bid. The testimony was already placed on the agenda that if you look at the basic cost of providing the service, it appears that it exceeds or equal the amount of the bid. That would render it not a responsible bid and there is a provision for that, but I'm not arguing whether you'd have approved it or not, what I'm arguing to you is you had not explained sufficiently to the public why that bid was a responsible bid and acceptable. To say that if the guy doesn't do the job, then you'll come back later and deal with it is, is, um, waiting for the car to run off the ditch before you, um, take a proper motion. So, I wanted to encourage the, the council to pay more attention to night's process, it is now after eleven and that's the time that we're opening the public portion, many of the people that came to speak to you tonight couldn't stay until this hour and I think it was deliberate that we, we, we don't really wanna hear from the public and we did everything possible to drive that meeting to the latest portion of the day. That's not good government, if folks can't have confidence in their government and that's, the confidence is driven by the transparency and accountability. So, I would encourage you, um, in the future to make sure that at least we are explaining our vote to the public, similar to what you did with some of the workers' comp cases, I think this one cries out for that, it seems unfair. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Ms. Francis Harrison.
Francis Harrison, three oh two Eastwood First Street. Let me say good evening to everyone and I have some concerns, to piggyback on what Mr. McCoy has said, I keep hearing the process too and I got a little problem with some of the processes that are being put out there because as we said, they are not being explained and I don't think they're being worked out because as we know, this new garbage company, we have a problem with this bulk and I don't know if you needed more information from the community to help you guys make the decision that you made, but I don't think you got it. The other thing I wanted to talk about is this, um, resolution number one, you're talking about these, um, solar-powered garbage cans and I understand that the money was allocated maybe a year and a half ago and it was a talk about three hundred cans, I'd like to know the process on that, how many cans it actually is, where these cans are gonna be, how are these cans gonna be monitored, have you also included those quarters, have you included those businesses there to take the ownership on doing this? I hope this is all part of your processes because you keep saying processes, but as we can see as citizens, a lot of your, your processes don't follow through because there's a, an enforcement and there's a follow-through and a monitoring of a lot of these processes that are dumped on us as citizens such as the sewer. Now, we got the garbage can, okay? Now, we got the garbage company, the processes need to be dealt with, you guys need to reach out to your constituents, find out what their concerns are before you put a rubber stamp on something, it's becoming a big problem. The other question I had was about, um, hold up a minute. We understand, those of us who understand litigation and those of us who understand workers' compensation, you guys went through it and explained it a little bit, workers' compensation is the law, litigation is good, when you say that the lawyers were able to get the lowest bid, that's not good, let's say they were able to compromise, they were able to work with the people because it sound like you were trying to lowball these people based on whatever their condition or whatever was going on with them. I'm also here to speak about Ceasefire, I'm a member of Ceasefire and we have planned our annual walk which is on Saturday, Palm Sunday, we will be taking our walk again. Ceasefire is to stop the la, the next shooting. I'm also here as the president of the Eastside Neighborhood Association, we have a lot of issues in the east side in terms of the Airbnb, in terms of the, um, the other things, could I have a few more minutes?
Wrap it up, you have to wrap it up, Ms. Harrison, please.
There is a lot of things that need to be addressed as resolutions, not street naming, not one-way streets, there are, are ordinance on the book that really needs your attention as legislators. The Airbnb is an issue, the parking is an issue, the garbage is an issue, there are a lot of things on the book, please guys legislate for the City of Patterson.
Thank you, Ms. Francis, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
There are no more speakers.
Motion to close, motion to close.
Council President, whoa, guys, hold on, I have a constituent, Council President, I have a constituent here, I think she didn't sign up by accident.
She signed up for the regular. Council President. This is public portion for the, for our special meeting. She still gotta do a public portion for the regular meeting.
Council members.
No, 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 no.
Council members.
Everybody that came here to speak.
Point of order, council member, there's a person in the public and I want that person to speak, please come to the mic, come to the mic, so we will give you three minutes for you to come to the mic.
Everybody spoke about everything, why she cannot speak about her issue?
Okay, um, the reason I'm here is I have a neighbor who runs-
Speak close to the mic, that way we can hear you.
I have a neighbor who runs a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week plumbing business from his driveway and this is pretty much my house looks like almost every day, I've been complaining, Allos, I've been complaining, I've been complaining to zoning, I've been complaining to police, it seems like everyone is saying it's not something they handle, so I'm trying to figure out who can I contact that, that could resolve the situation.
So, Councilman Delacce, he's your councilman, Councilman Delacce, so, uh-
He's aware.
Roll call.
Okay, so he will be in touch with you, mo, roll call, uh, to close public portion?
Moved by.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila and second by Councilman, um, um, Col, um, Al Delacce.
Roll call to close the public portion of the municipal council meeting, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, to address the concern from one of my constituents, um, she is right, I have reported this to the administration, I have reported this to zoning, I have reported this to police director, I've even connected the constituent with the OIC face-to-face where they, she addressed this concern with the highest level of government officials in our city. Madam B. A., I would, uh, once again, you could hear the address, the mayor has been notified about this issue, Javier Fernandez has been notified about this issue, the OIC has been notified about this issue, right? The police director has been notified about this issue, the zoning officer has been visited that location, notified the issue. I've done my part to relay your message to the highest levels and you had face-to-face of dialogue with them about this issue now, now the B. A., Madam B. A., please bring it into your cabinet meetings, um, and hopefully you could address this resident's concern. My vote is yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abdulaziz.
There's, there's, excuse me. There's no rebuttal, so, please, talk to your councilman.
She should, you're the councilman, you represent her.
Please continue, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Cotton.
Councilman Abdulaziz is the quote-unquote mayor of the sixth ward, you can speak to him. Speak to the mayor of the sixth ward, Councilman Abdulaziz, he's part, he's the president of G T D, getting things done.
Yeah, please, let, have respect with her concern, please.
Council members, we're voting on, we're voting, we're voting on closing the public portion, please.
I know.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
I, I was wondering what, what happened to G T V, what, mayor crap, now you crying, I mean, listen, these are common occurrences all over the place and it's unfortunate that, um, you know, this, and, um, it's unfortunate that the young lady has experienced this, but this is a common occurrence around the entire community, the city's as dirty as it's ever been, like, I, I've never, never seen this city as, as dirty as it is and people just being able to conduct business, doing all kinds of different, you know, um, things throughout the city is, anything goes in Patterson, this is just it, this is what we, what we've gotten, but this is according to what this council has been willing to support, so, to your point, Ms. Francis, you know, we've, we, you- We've witnessed these infractions throughout the centuries, how people have gone before a court and just because they've gone before a court, you, you're talking about an employee that was wrongfully terminated, right? Who, by the way, we're gonna, we're gonna spend, this city's gonna spend a great deal of money on, right? The judge offers him a million, but offers somebody that gets his teeth knocked out five hundred thousand, now, not to say that five hundred thousand dollars is a small amount, but by the time you factor in all of the fees and things of that nature, we're supposed to be here to defend the public's best interest, yes, we do have to defend the taxpayers, but allowing these types of situations to occur when we have other people who are awarded hundreds of thousands of dollars for far less, for being called out of their name in, in the workplace for, for more failure by this administration and then everybody talks about how great it is, oh, an amazing job we've done, I've never seen the city this bad, but we continue to, to pat, pat each other on the back, give up, give up, give everyone accolades for failures and then to watch a young man get mistreated like that and then, and then we don't stand, you know, in support of or against his mistreatment when we know how corrupt this, the, uh, judiciary systems are, this young, the other young man was just brutally beaten, handcuffed, knee in the face and the officer was acquitted, but they on my doorstep for one ballot, one absentee ballot, this stuff is, you can't make this stuff up, I would never sit silently, silently on this, wow, wow, anyway, it, it's pointless, like, the, the agenda that's, that's driven here is, is obvious, Madam Clerk, I appreciate it, my vote is, um, yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Mims.
So, um, I just wanna say, as we come to close to the viewing public, I wanna thank the viewing public and I'm waiting because I, I don't know if it's personal, but when I'm speaking on the camera, it, it zooms on everyone else and never me, so I, I have to put it on record, okay?
Get it done, Ryan.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm beginning to take it personal here.
Give it a chance.
Give it a chance, it's like every occurrence, there's no chance, I'm gonna call it out.
That's right, that's right.
He's covering up fire.
I'm gonna call it out, so-
Free the speech, free the speech.
I wanna thank the public for coming out and those that are viewing, I know it's a special meeting, but it was a workshop, um, we come out and there's a lot of things that get done, um, as we sit here, um, and then next Tuesday we'll be voting on some more items, but I just wanna say to the community at large, uh, when it comes to situations and circumstances as it pertain to the residents in the city, um, as legislators, it is our responsibility to do our due diligence in researching, knowing the facts and then voting accordingly or amending the ordinances that are on the books or creating new ones. With that being stated, um, I wanna close by saying, first of all, happy birthday- With that being stated, um, I want to close by saying, first of all, happy birthday to my daughter who turned thirty-four years old today, and a happy birthday to Lady Johanna Mendez. Today is her birthday as well. She must be special, she's born on my daughter's birthday. So, to my daughter, I'll make sure she looks tomorrow, that she gets her shout-out. Um, and to, uh, everyone, it is Read Across America Week in our schools. So make sure if you have time or availability, that you reach out to a principal, and you go in and read to our children. They love it in our buildings. Yes, yes, so make sure you reach out. Um, I'm at School Twenty-One, if you want to read at my school, there's no time limit. Sometimes we have the rules and then we overdo it, I'll just say. So, um, if you would like to read at a school, reach out to a principal. If you are an alumni of School Twenty-One, please, reach out to me, um, and we'll definitely try to fit you into our calendar. We have a very, very robust list of great people that are coming to our school, um, and I'm really happy about that. Ms. Frances, keep doing what you're doing. Keep doing what you're doing, you're doing a phenomenal job. And one of the things that I learned, um, in growing up, was that we have to respect our elders. We have to respect people, period, and when that is lost, there is a problem in our community. Madam Clerk, with that stated, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Oden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, good evening, Patterson, those who are still awake and watching us live on YouTube. Or those who are here in the chamber, came to make your voice heard. Um, thank you for sharing your concern. Today, uh, we had one special meeting with the, uh, workshop session. And one request, uh, to Council President. Our people come here, spend hours here in the chamber, just to speak for three luxurious minutes. And at least we should have given them a chance earlier, at least they can speak and go home. So, in the future, if you can have the public portion a little bit earlier, then this time will be greatly appreciated, I'm pretty sure. I would definitely say my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Oden. Councilman Valdez.
Uh, before closing this, uh, poll of, uh, this special meeting, Madam BA, I want you to please update me, uh, where we are, uh, with the police contract, okay? Where we are with the, um, situation of the police department contract, both sides. If you could send me email, um, at least where we at, yes, correct. Um, second, um, you know that some, sometimes people say that when we vote on contracts, et cetera, there. I don't know if you could go back into the record and look into the situation that we have with Rosselli. Rosselli got sent in court, got us in court, and tried to freeze the city, and that's why we ended it with an emergency contract of garbage. So, if anybody is not satisfied of the process, they had, they could get to legal advice and go and tell them this, and I don't agree on this, and the legal system, and then they probably could challenge the city. Everybody has that right to see, seek for legal advice in any moment that we do here. Um, this is, uh, I'm gonna do what Min says. Mims, why you press that button? Okay, uh, happy, happy, uh, um, International Women's Month, okay? Um, also, um, we cannot, when we settle these cases that involve police, it's sad. Because some people make comments that pull more down the morale of the police. I'm happy to have a police department that is improving and that is working, uh, and trying to keep us safe. So, Madam Clerk, I know your, your, your office did a great job in, in, in this process of trying to put everybody in, in this next election. And those that qualify, congratulation, those that are gonna run, congratulation, and I hope them congratulate us when we come back. So, my, my, my vote is, is yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Velez, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, thank you. Uh, we finished the agenda and just allow me to speak for, for a few minutes, uh, for just two minutes. Um, I decided to stay on the positive side during the work, first of all. I'm very excited to see my third ward resident, happy about the Amistad Park, totally renovated. We have exercise machine, machine in Amistad, new table, new grill for the community to enjoy the park. Eastside Park totally renovated, state-of-the-art tennis court. We coming up with a clinic to teach our children how to play tennis on Eastside Park. Fourteenth Avenue repaid, totally done. East Forty-second Street, never been paid for over thirty years, we fix it under my leadership as the councilman of the third ward, leader died under my leadership. It was a delapidated factory, I support our project, we have a brand-new school, a new charter school that is gonna, um, educate our children, and that's what I do. This, the third ward now has a councilman that is not sleeping on this chair, no more. I'm not sleeping on this chair, on this chair. I'm active and I'm working, I'm getting the job done. For the first time in over twenty years, the third ward has a councilman that you could touch, that you could see, a councilman that go to your house, that address your problem, and that's what I do. And I could do this all day long, because I love to serve the community. That's a big difference between Councilman Alex Mendez and any other person. So I'm excited, and I'm getting ready for this election, I'm getting ready. May fourteen, I'm running for reelection to be your councilman of the third ward for the next term. And we have a line of project on the pipeline that I'm gonna address to my con- I'm gonna share with my constituents, but I want to say thank you to all my residents of the third ward, because they're happy and they're excited about the leadership that they have in the third ward with Alex Mendez as your councilman. And now, as council president, my job over here is to bring the core into the chamber, but to give the opportunity to my council colleague. When you see, when you hear council member, oh, my item was not on the agenda, look, there's something wrong. You have to follow the process. Now, um, so those, uh, those garbage receptacle that we have, the new garbage that is, that are coming, listen, there's a lot of positive thing, I know there's a lot of problem, but let's concentrate on the things that we could do to move our city forward. Let's talk about what can we do collectively. I understand that the city, we have a lot of problem with the ball pickup. We all know that we have a lot of problem, we're struggling with that. I'm educating all my constituents to call, email, get into the website, but it's, we're not there yet. We have a, a very extensive discussion with administration, and we try to get this done collectively. So, I'm looking forward to continuing the work that I've been doing with my constituents in the third ward. All the cases that, that you, that you hear here, they went to court, the judge ruled, and they agree on the settlement, and that's the reason why they are in front of us. Let's continue working, let's continue moving the city forward. If you have any question for me, my cell phone number, it's nine seven three nine three zero one four three six. Last but not least, happy birthday to my wife, Johani Mendez. Um, and, uh, she came to experience her birthday with me. She's right there in my office, so we got some ca- cake, but I appreciate her support. And also, Councilwoman Mims, to your daughter, happy birthday to your daughter, may God continue blessing her with long life, uh, you know, and, and happiness. So, uh, Madam Clerk, so, let's keep moving the city forward, let's keep getting the job done. Madam BA, there's a lot of work to do, but we're gonna stay on the positive side. It's a lot of work to do, we have to continue the conversation with the ball pickup. What are we doing to make it better? What's gonna happen, what's the next step? Uh, we definitely have to continue the job. I know we have a conversation with Billy, street cleaning is back on track. Uh, um, the, um, uh, also, Madam, uh, Madam BA, the, the, the recycling, it's, it's a problem. I, I had a conversation with, uh, inspector, with the supervisor, Juan. He doesn't have the truck, he doesn't have the manpower, we have to sit down and see how we're gonna bring the amount of people that we need on the recycling department to make sure that we do the route that need to be done. Um, definitely, we have a new truck, but we need more drivers, and we need the staff. So with that being said, Patterson, good night.
Ready, Madam Clerk.
Let's keep, let's keep fighting. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, before you make the roll call, um, I just want to say to, um, my, uh, out in the community, that we're having, um, this year we celebrated twenty years with my art, an essay contest with Interfaith, um, Performing Arts School. It'll be twenty years, I have been with her for fifteen years. Uh, we will be doing it at the library from four to six on Thursday, and let me tell you, it is absolutely wonderful. We had over eight hundred entries, Councilwoman, over eight hundred entries. Because you know why our contest is good? Because we give our children cash money. Their first, second, and third place, we give you cash. And I encourage parents to please, when you see contests, please, just, just have your child enter, just in case the school doesn't do it, then you do it yourself, if you see something. And also, on Friday, at school number fifteen, which is in your ward, Councilman, I need you to come, uh, if Councilwoman Mims or anyone, uh, it's called beautification of school number fifteen. You're gonna, Friday, fifteen. You're gonna see how those children painted the hallways like the Al Moody, at the Al Moody School on Market Street. So, please, if you want to come out, just come visit school number fifteen, uh, Friday after one o'clock. But also, for Thursday, just please come out. I just want to say it's absolutely beautiful, these kids, and I always say we have talented children. And sometimes they each have a different talent, and they do different things. And just like our Black History Program was about the arts. And the arts is everything. It could be cooking, it could be painting, it could be writing, it could be everything. So we have some talented, talented children, and some of the stuff that you will see, we have it on display. Thank you, Council President, all you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, all you in the audience, have a good night, it's before midnight.
Ryan, don't, 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 don't go, yeah, Ryan.
Thank you, good night, everyone, good night, people in the audience, have a good night, everybody.
Council President, I just want to make an announcement.
On Friday, March the twenty-second, um, I will be honoring twenty-two women with the Women Who Rock Award. Uh, it will be here at City Hall, all of the honorees have been identified. Um, I've been doing this for many, many years, and I'm looking forward to honoring this great diversity of amazing women who rock out time and time again for their communities, um, to continue to move things forward. So it will be here in the chambers on the twenty-second at six o'clock PM. Please come out, and let's celebrate these amazing.
Thank you.
Council President, Council President, uh, why not, you guys speak. Uh, I just want to announce that my grand opening in my headquarters will be four thirty-sixth Main Street, this Saturday at three o'clock, I invite you.
Thank you, mo- um, most, um, thank you, Ryan, thank you, you could take off, so.
Let me announce the votes.
Yes.
So the votes are eight yeses, one absent. The public portion of the municipal council is hereby closed.
Thank you, good night, Patterson, let's go back.
Let's do, let's do the roll call.
Motion to clo- motion to, uh, go back to workshop. Motion, move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Oden, going back to workshop.
To reconvene.
To reconvene.
So, roll call to reconvene the municipal workshop of Tuesday, March, March fifth, twenty twenty-four.